Good evening. At this time, I'll call a regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission together. The date is Wednesday, November 7, 2018, and the time is 7:01. Please join me in the Pledge and Allegiance of Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ally?
Alan King.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
David Perrin.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Bob Simon.
Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner.
Okay, consideration of the minutes of the October 3, 2018, meeting. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3, 2008, be approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Then we're going to go on to the continuation of the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding significant activity on application A 186.25 Research Parkway. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For your record again, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and applicant, Five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC. To my left is Michelle Carlson, the team project engineer with BL Companies. From our last meeting, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we've had an opportunity to review our plans, go through the process that you had set forth in terms of timelines and timeframes and goals for each of those particular weeks. So I think we're at a point, Mr. Chairman, other than some wording on the environmental planners' report, which I did receive this morning, there is an awful lot of effort that's gone in over the past month. In terms of presentation this evening, I just wanted to give you a recapitulation of where we've been, to sort of remind the Commission. I'll make it brief. The site at Five Research Parkway is entirely in the Mackenzie River reservoir watershed. It comprises about 3.5% of that watershed area. The site is 179.8 acres. As you know, the total watershed area for the Mackenzie reservoir is 8.85 square miles, 8.85 square miles, so that we're, again, 3.5% of that watershed area. The plan is to fill, with your permission, 457 square feet of wetlands, as you had seen in our presentation. That's out of over 1.2 million square feet of wetlands on this 180-acre site, again asking to fill 457 square feet. That's down from the original presentation of little over 2,500 square feet, with changes made to the plan throughout this process. The plan is to do work in the upland review area. It's about 63,000 square feet of work within that area, and that's -- upland review area on the site is little over 1.169 million square feet of upland review area. That also was reduced from our original submission. It was a little over 90,000 square feet of work in that upland review. Our plan proposes to create 5,583, rather, square feet of new wetlands on the site that would replace the 457 square feet that's being lost, and that's a ratio of 12 to 1, a new square footage of wetlands to what would be filled. Now, the main task assigned to the engineering team by the applicant who is present tonight, should the Commission have any questions, was to design the project so as to have no short-term or long-term adverse impacts, either to the wetlands or the watershed. Again, they recognized that from the very beginning. I think we've presented all of that to you over the past four months. Confirmation that the plans were prepared and submitted met that goal were primarily determined, or confirmed, rather, by your independent plan reviewer. George Cotter was assigned the task of reviewing the plan, particularly the erosion and sediment control plan. His confirmation that with his proposed changes which were incorporated, the plan as presented, he says, I quote him, "I believe will protect the wetlands and the water supply." That was the confirmation conclusion from Mr. Cotter, again, the independent plan reviewer, acknowledging that the sediment -- erosion and sediment control plan works. We know how important that is to the development of this site and to the protection of your wetlands. There's a memorandum today that you've received from Rob Baltramidis, the town engineer, also confirming that the plan is developed, does work, that he was satisfied with the method of stormwater management. And again, you have that memo as part of your record. He said, "is based on sound engineering principles and would not be expected to negatively impact down gradient conditions." Again, the wetlands, the watershed, that's his conclusion. You have comments from Eric Kruger from the Water and Sewer Division, conditions of -- suggested conditions of approval. He's offered them both to this Commission and to Planning and Zoning Commission. A vast majority of them have been incorporated in a new set of plans provided to your staff on October 29. So you have Michelle and her team as professional engineers submitting, preparing the plan. You have a professional engineer, Mr. Cotter, reviewing the plan. You have Mr. Baltramidis, the town engineer, reviewing the plans. You have Eric Kruger from Water and Sewer reviewing the plans, and they all have come to the same conclusion, which should provide some measure of comfort for this Commission. But in order to provide you another layer of comfort or protection, Mr. Cotter recommended a $296,419 bond be required as one of your conditions of approval. The applicant had agreed to that, and based upon some additional conversations with Mr. Kruger, has agreed to increase that bond, should you see fit to grant this application, to $318,419. And I think that's in Ms. O'Hare's report to you. Lastly, in an effort to, again, give great assurance to this Commission, the applicant has agreed to pay all reasonable and necessary expenses for the services of an independent erosion and sediment control plan implementation monitor during the course of site work until the site stabilization. This, I think, is unprecedented. You would know better than I, but I think it's a unique proposal. It's something that's been sought by the Chairman, been sought by Water and Sewer Division, and I believe by the planner. I have kept in constant contact with Attorney Janice Small, your town attorney, to make certain that this role is clearly and concisely designed and drafted, and I believe you have a memorandum from her today also that spells out the fact that, over a period of time, that she and I will resolve the language for that position, recognizing that the goal is to protect this site, the tunnel at Wallingford, throughout the course of stabilizing the site during construction. Now, you set up, Mr. Chairman, last month, certain guidelines, certain timeframes for work to be done, and we'd like to think that the applicant has held to those timeframes. And so we had prepared, I'm not sure if it made it to your packets of information that were provided, but we had prepared a response to Ms. O'Hare's suggested conditions of approval that were provided to us the second week, and we've submitted a list of conditions of approval after we sat for three hours roughly with your environmental planner to make sure that we understood all of the concerns that had been expressed by her in her suggested conditions of approval. Some of the language, we thought, was a bit vague and needed to be clarified, you know, treated a little more succinctly, so that there isn't any confusion moving forward. So that's something that we had submitted as our proposal, and again, I think those conditions of approval, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if they've made your package or not.
Well, I think there's -- certainly, there's plenty of information that has come to us, the Commission, to us. So I think there's probably more than one list of conditions of approval. Are you using the one dated November 6?
Well, that's the last one that -- yeah, no, there's -- that has changed from what we had submitted back on, I believe it was the 29th of October, 26th of October. We had submitted the list in response to her first list, and you're right, there was some changes made, and to be fair, Erin did call today and spoke with Michelle, and I got cued into that phone call. And again, there's subtle distinctions, Mr. Chairman, from what is being proposed in her current November 6 environmental planners' report, but they're significant only from their perspective, like, for example, one of the conditions of approval is a fairly lengthy section on the role of the monitor, and she's also offered to this Commission, you know, her draft scope of work, and yet that's really inconsistent with what the information you received today from Attorney Small. It says that, again, that level of work, that level of detail and what that scope of work will be, will be hammered out, probably with the town representatives and with the applicant and myself.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, the Commission got Attorney Sennaviva's version of condition of approvals in your packet last night, and also his -- Attorney Sennaviva's scope of work in your packet last night. It's not stapled onto my report. I should say that my environmental planners' report dated November 6 has a few typos in there, one of which says the applicant's scope of work and conditions was attached. It wasn't attached, but I did put it in the November 6 packet that you got last night, so.
Let me just do this. I've got -- this is the environmental planners' report, I think we got -- okay. Is what you got in here and what you're saying, is that stuff attached?
In my environmental planners' report on pages 9, 10, and 11, that's my conditions of approval and then my scope of work.
Okay.
The applicant's is separate, and that was sent to you last night separately on -- it should -- one of them, the scope work says BL at the top, the -- I'm sorry, the conditions of approval says BL at the top, and the other one says --
My man.
And the other one was...
What one do you have there, Attorney Sennaviva?
This is the one that we presented to the environmental planner on October 26. It's near timeline.
Well, the conditions of approval were supposed to be done about the third week in October, not the first week in November.
They're -- we're pretty closely aligned. We're almost there as far as what we agree upon.
Well, wait a minute, but we were supposed to agree upon them in October. That was the conversation at the last meeting.
Yes, but I guess we can't agree, so then at least we agree 90%, and mine are in my environmental planners' report, and I don't know what Mr. Sennaviva...
Well, how do we keep coming up with new environmental planners' report? Because there's other ones here that they have responded. Let's see, here's a November 5. That's to Mr. Kruger. But they have had your comments that they responded to, and we keep adding comments and going forward here? How can they -- how can we make a decision based on this memorandum dated November 6?
Well, what I -- what my idea for the evening was to go through all the new stuff that has happened since October 3, and then after we go through that, you might feel comfortable moving forward. We don't have to rehash things that happened before October 3, but from October 3 to today?
Yeah, but now I was.
I don't know. Attorney Sennaviva, this is the one dated October 29 that you submitted?
Correct.
Okay, that's what you have?
Yeah, it's the --
Okay.
It's the cleaned-up version that doesn't have the deletions and the additions that you had sought.
Right, this is the cleaned-up version that the Commission got. They didn't get the unclean version because it's too confusing. If that was okay with you, I thought that'd be okay. Did you hand them in the other version?
Just...
The cleaned-up version?
Just the cleaned-up version.
Okay.
I assume the rest of it is all part of your record, whatever we've submitted during the course of these last four months are part of your record?
Yes.
Well, I would think so, because I think a lot of it we've received in our packet, so I would have submitted. Well, Erin, I don't quite understand what you think. You've spent 30 days, actually five weeks, since October 3 trying to hammer out the conditions here of approval, and you're not done yet, and you want to continue. You said you want to go over everything new since October 3. That'll take us five weeks to do that.
I think it could be -- for instance, the hydrogeology report came in on October 24. I think the hydrogeologist is here, and maybe you might want to hear from him. Or not. Should I paraphrase what was said in his report?
Well, is there something negative that's come out since October 3?
Well, the hydrogeologist's report talks about the potential for bleed-out when they cut on the eastern side. You know, it's a cut-and-fill operation. So on the eastern side, the biggest fill, I understand, is like 70 feet, a cut. Cut is 70 feet, with most of it less than that, 60, 50, 40 feet, whatever, on the east side. So when you cut into that material, the hydrogeologist was asked to look at the material based on the 100 boring logs that were conducted in October, in August, and September, and come up with an analysis, is it going to bleed out or not? That was one of the things. He was looking at many things, but that was one of the things he wanted to look at.
So this bleed-out, what's going to happen to the bleed-out?
He said there may be bleed-out. He didn't quantify it. He said there may be bleed-out, and he said the regional groundwater table was at 15 feet below the surface at the highest. So, in other words, some of the areas, it was below 15 feet, it was 30 feet below or whatever.
Does that mean they can't build this site, this application?
No. What it means is there, when they go to do the cut operation, there will possibly be bleed-out. So what that means to this Commission, all that means is the -- and actually, George Cotter foresaw the possibility in his report, and all that means is you have to control that bleed-out, and you control it with diversion trenches or stone dikes and this kind of thing, and you wrap it around, but at some point, that material, that water has to go into a wetland or a stream. This is groundwater that's coming out of the wall into, and that will end up in a wetland or stream, so that's how it relates to this Commission and the erosion.
But did they handle that? Is that in their plan?
Well, maybe they could present that.
The answer is yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, it's been reviewed by now four engineers. The report from Mr. Baltramidis is brand-new. It's today. Mr. Kruger has had an opportunity to review the plan. We did bring the hydrogeologist, but at the end of the day, all that he did was confirm what Michelle's been saying for the last four months. And again, I would just repeat that it -- this plan has been reviewed by a number of professional engineers, and they all have come to the same conclusion. That's our comfort level.
Another thing you might want, a new piece of information you might want to go over is the change in the use of flocculants. This concerned the water department, and there was, oh, I don't know, three of the comment letters from the water division concerned flocculants. So the applicant went to a soil specialist that deals with flocculants. They might want to address that. There was some back and forth.
Did they satisfy the water department's concern?
Yes. Do you want to...
And that's it?
Well, the -- it changed what George Cotter had recommended, so this Commission might want to know how it deviates from what George Cotter recommended.
But how can we -- what would be the decision-making? The flocculent, the so-called professionals, the water department, the flocculent is there for the water department, doesn't get red water in their drinking water supply, and that was the main concern, or the main concern, the water department was the protection of their water supply, their drinking water supply. So they changed the rules on the flocculent. I don't see what we're going to do to make it different.
Oh, not nothing. I just thought you might want to know that things had changed since last time. That's all.
Well, it's got all the documentation on it. Yes, Dave?
Okay, again, okay, let me just try it this way. Ms. Murray, you've done all this work. Can you assure this Commission that if we approve your plan as presented, that we are more than reasonably sure that we are, that there's not going to be danger to wetlands or the watershed or anything else during construction phase and when this project is complete?
Yes.
Thank you.
What else you got?
Oh, the -- another change was with the use of the small pond and the large pond. Again, I'm bringing this up just to inform you not to -- I'm not arguing that it's a bad idea, but so the water -- it was the water division that was driving the idea to have the large pond drawn down all throughout the construction phase. On October 3, it was represented, it would just be drawn down initially, and then it would fill back up depending, like, natural, just according to natural storm events would make it fill back up. So the water division wants it drawn down as an extra precaution, belt and suspenders drawn down perpetually through the two-year construction phase. Of course, the muddy river would continue trickling through the middle of it, and there's another side tributary that would continue trickling, you know, contributing some water to the middle of it, and it would be drawn down by that drawdown pipe, and that's the water division drove that decision. But the flocculants won't be used.
But, excuse me, but it's going to act as a retention area in a storm event?
Maybe the engineer should answer that.
Oh, I'm really asking you. Isn't that the intent? You're telling us that the water department wants it drawn down, but it's going to, in a storm event, it's going to refill?
Just like it does today.
And then it's going to go back down again?
Well, except today, that pipe is closed. The gate valve is closed.
But not today. It's going to act as a retention pond, and then, I think it was always intended to be that way. That was my understanding of it, always to be that way.
Well, no, the...
It would be drawn down, it would act as a retention pond to control the flow, and it would run down again. When it drained out, it drained out.
Okay, but now the gate valve is going to be open all the time for two years unless that, unless that pond fills up and it's really silty water, then they'll close the gate valve.
So is that part of the scope of the monitor on the site?
Well, the monitor will monitor everything, yeah.
Is it the water department that's going to monitor the filling of the small pond and back and forth?
You mean the determination whether or not we shut the gate valve?
Yeah. See? You created a whole nother issue. What else you got?
That would be done if it was too turbid, but you're right, it's sort of subjective because the DEP doesn't have, like, parameters for turbidity. It's a subjective determination if something's too turbid. So it would probably be the water division, and when they make their periodic inspections, they have gotten permission to go on the site during construction, and they might have opinions about if something's too turbid or not.
Yeah, and so I'm sure they'll handle it, the water department will handle it with the applicant. My concern right now is that there's another creation of conditions of approval. You've satisfied the ones for October 29? Is that correct? The conditions of approval that she recommended, you satisfied on, in the October 29 category?
The original list that was provided in early October, yeah. Those have all been incorporated into the new set of plans that came out October 29. You know, maybe I can make this a little bit easier for the Commission. I know you've got a full agenda. Let me just tell you, I think where there are differences between what Erin has drafted as of last night and what I provided to her and the Commission in the timeframe that you provided to me, the differences aren't that substantial, but they're meaningful in that, and I think there's only three or four, and it won't take a long period of time, and I think you'll see why there's a disagreement.
Go ahead.
So in my, what I just handed out to you on the conditions of approval that we've suggested on October 29, number one is pretty much the same as what Erin put on her November 6 environmental planners' report, condition of approval, so that's fine. Number two is the same as what we proposed October 29. Number three...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
You're moving too fast.
Too fast, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So if you take Erin's page 8...
But what about the November 6?
Her November 6 environmental planners' report, page 8. We start on page 8. She has the list of her conditions of approval, suggested conditions of approval.
Yeah, and that's what you're answering?
Correct.
Okay.
And what I'm telling you is what I just handed out to you tonight, which I gave to your staff on October 29, or actually 26, that we agree with number one. She has a little different verbiage in there, but it's fine, so number one is fine.
Okay.
Number two, the two bullet points under number two are both fine. I haven't changed those, or she didn't change mine. Number three, the first bullet point is fine. The bond amount is, as I've represented in my opening statement, $318,419. Again, confirmation from the town engineer that the number is sufficient. The second bullet point, if you look at what I drafted versus what Erin put down there, mine relates to my conversations with Attorney Small, and that is that in terms of the scope of work for the erosion control plan implementation monitor, that's going to be a process that's going to take a period of maybe a month or so. I've drafted an initial draft. Janice is working on some responses to it now. Attorney Small's working on that now, and then we'll figure out the process. I know that you'll want someone from this Commission to be part of the overall line of communications, but we'll have to have a line of communication, and there'll be somebody who will work with the monitor, et cetera, because this is important to water and sewer, it's important to engineering, it's important to planning and zoning. But if you look at the bullet point, that second bullet point under condition number three that Erin has, and this may sound trivial, but it's not, it says, for example, permit you to cover expense of the monitor. Well...
Well, that's not a wetland issue.
Okay, fine. It should be reasonable and necessary.
That's a legal issue.
That's right. So my point is...
So that section, that part of that scope of work or the, or how it's going to get justified, that goes upstairs to the water department.
Correct, that's fine. The next bullet under paragraph 3, that hasn't changed, that's fine. Condition number four...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead, page 9 of Erin's report.
Okay, we started on seven or eight? Okay, four. All right, okay.
So the first bullet point talks about the use of flocculants and the particular person and company that is involved in that. It's a woman named Deb Seavy from DNS Site Management LLC.
Hang on just a moment.
Sure.
DNS Site Management, is that Deborah? Okay.
Yeah, same person.
All right, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Attorney Sennaviva, I think you have a typo on your heading on number four. Read your -- your heading on number four should be demolition.
Hmm?
You have, and then, because your number five and four are the same.
Okay, that's right, demolition phase.
Yeah.
So the first bullet point, there is a lengthy list in Erin's suggested use of flocculants, and again, we shortened it in our condition, proposed condition, to use it in accordance with however it's been planned through our, the plans, and as designed by DNS Site Management, which is the expert in that field. And again, that's consistent with, I think the Chairman actually mentioned the use of flocculants first, four months ago, and then Mr. Cotter mentioned it, and it's gone through the approval process with Mr. Kruger to make sure it's something that doesn't negatively lead to... doesn't negatively impact on the watershed. So, I, I think it, it, it had a greater role for that person, that person, you know, we're, we're going to use Ms. Seavey or her company as needed, uh, in order to ensure that the use of floculants is done in accordance with proper specifications and the, and the plan. So our language is a bit shorter, this was a, it, it gave a, a greater breadth of obligation to DNS Site Management. The second bullet point is fine, under four. The third is fine, contingency erosion control plan, final version. The next one is fine, the storage container.
Hang on.
That's on page 10 now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The signage indicating deep emergency spill reporting, that's fine, the next bullet. The only other changes, um, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission relate to the last bullet point of four and the last bullet point of five. And that is that it indicates that during any hiatus in site activity, that the disturbed areas must be stabilized to the satisfaction of the implementation monitor, and monitoring for adequacy of erosion control measures. My understanding, again, in my discussions with the town attorney, is that the monitor will do exactly as the name suggests, well, monitor. The role of the monitor is not to be a czar, but rather to be a monitor, and to interact with the town authorized representative, whoever this town chooses, and to make sure that there is a level of communication with the contractor, the owner, et cetera. So, I think to, what we simply have done is to take out that language and say that it will be stabilized in accordance with the approved plans. I think that language is appropriate, and that gives the monitor the ability to communicate directly with the contractor if need be, if it's a small issue, and with the town representative if it's a, if it's a more significant issue. And, and what you eventually will see, as I've been working with Attorney Small, is we've identified the level of different issues as either minor, major, or, or, or critical, and so that there is a, an ability for the monitor to handle certain things in the field as any monitor might.
I, I would think the job of the monitor is to follow the plan that was approved.
Exactly.
And it's not a case of, of recreating the plan on site. Now, granted, there's field changes, there's, there's always issues that come up, but the, the, I think the direct, direction is to follow the plan that was designed, because that's the whole key here. If we approve this plan, you've got to have a contractor that's going to be able to build it per the plan. I mean, we talked about this, there's more of an issue in, in being able to build it than a wetlands, um, issue here. Erin, do you have any problems with, with Dennis and Sanviva's comments?
Just, yeah, um, two, two things. One is, his version doesn't ask anyone to go back during the quiet period to check up on the site. Let's say it's a two-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, why doesn't it say that? Because that, if that's the job in the scope department, when you get to the scope department, are you referring to the monitor?
In mine, the monitor would go back, let's say after a big rain, let's say there's a two-month quiet period, the monitor would go up back after a big rain and check up and make sure everything was okay, even though it's quiet, even though nobody's on the site, he would go do that. And I, I believe in Attorney Sanviva's version that no one would go back, at least that's how I read it, I don't know.
I, I, any comment?
Well, that's not what it says. It says, in accordance with the approved plans, you have to stabilize it, and the monitor's role will clearly be, as Erin suggests, a monitor and make sure that the stabilization's in effect, that it's in effect.
Well, it is a stabilization in her, in this case, this is more, uh, an ongoing project, after every, the rain of a, or a storm event, of an on, in the ongoing, not, not if the contractor or the applicant shuts the job down.
Well, she's talking about the, the quiet period in, in these instances where disturbed areas, as she indicates, must be stabilized. So my, my point was that if there's a period of time when there's no construction going on, I, I suspect that the monitor will be going by in every precipitation event to make sure that, that there isn't any, any problems at the site. I suspect the owner will be doing the same.
But this scope of work is going to be resolved with the law department-
That's correct.
And the town planner, and the water department.
Correct.
That's where I think, Erin, you're going to be able to, to hammer out the scope of the work.
Okay, I, just if they could tell me where it says on the, uh, on the October 29th plans, like, I don't know what it says about quiet periods. Do you know what it says on the plans? I guess you mean it's written somewhere on the plans, it says something specifically about what to do in a quiet period?
Yes.
Michelle Carlson, it, on the plans, the sedimentation erosion control plans and notes, anything that's left open for more than 30 days has to be temporarily stabilized in accordance with the plan. We will also have a Connecticut DEP, uh, general permit for construction activities during, uh, construction, you know, during stormwater events, and even if the applicant isn't working on the site, and there's a rain, and the permit is still active, we have to go out and inspect the controls after that rain, even if no one's working for three months. We, we still have to go out and inspect while that permit is open. So there are avenues where that's covered, multiple locations.
So do the approved plans say that, that you have to go out and inspect to, in order to keep your DEP permit compliant?
It, it, in accordance with the regulations, yeah, there's, there's language in there that says in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations, and that's part of the, the Connecticut DEP permit, too.
And it, does it talk about periods that are quiet, you know, for, let's say there's a change in business plans or something, and it's quiet for longer than 30, it's just quiet for quite a while, does it talk about how to, what's supposed to happen on the site?
Yes, any, anything that's left bare or vacant for more than 30 days has to be stabilized. So when we have to go out during the obligations of the permit to do the inspections, even when nobody's out there, if things are eroding or aren't stabilized, or need to be hit again with seed, someone's going to have to come out to the job and, and take care of that. There's, there's going to have to be somebody that will come out, and if there's something that needs to be fixed, it has to be fixed. There's a, there's a, there's a vehicle to get that accomplished on the plan notes and in the permit.
Maybe we can come together on this by, I just thought of a word that might bring us right together. Disturbed areas must be monitored and stabilized as required by the approved plans.
But it's on the plan, so that's redundant.
Now, if you stabilize it once, it doesn't say in here anyone's monitoring it. That's my point, that's why I added the word monitor, that's all.
What else have you got? Anything else?
Not on that one.
Anything else?
Well, I think Attorney Sanviva was going to address number five, now, we're going to talk about number five?
It's actually the same as, as the last bullet point, I think I tried to do them both at the same time. Again, it's during a quiet period.
Well, you came down through your list and, um, for, in, last bullet point in four is your second bullet point in five?
The, yeah, they're very, they're very similar, it's just different.
Very similar.
Right. So the changes that we made were the same in both bullet points.
So I, I don't see, uh, I see they seem, so you're agreeing with everything but a couple of items, then?
Yeah, and, and it was just for clarity purposes, because your environmental planner is very specific on, on some minutiae, and I wanted to make sure that we were clear. That's all.
Well, as you said earlier, there's, the activity going on here does not precedent any other application that we have processed, and I'm not sure if it's in any application either BL companies or you as an attorney has processed. And that is the fact that this monitor person, and I, I guess that's a pretty good name for it, monitoring, um, the site plan, plans, um, as regard, in regard to the soil and erosion control. So, I don't, I think that the fact that, that all the other departments want a piece of this apple with this monitor, and what they want to see done, um, I think it's a little early, I, I don't think we can dictate internally in this scope of monitor without their other input.
Um, I don't care who monitors it, I want someone to go out there, sometimes quiet means they disappear.
No, I, I'm-
They're in other states.
I'm in agreement with the monitor, but I, I think that all the other departments need to be input on that.
Okay, let me just, we're not quite done, because the scope of work that you're now referring to is, um, attached to condition number three. And it's, it's, it's on the last page of your, of the, it's on page 10 and 11 of my environmental planners report, which went out yesterday, which you received yesterday. That's the scope of work, it's attached to condition number three, and Attorney Sanviva's went out in your packet yesterday, and his is attached to his conditions of approval, which we just went through. So, which he just handed out, but he also got it in the packet last night. So, at the top, his at the top is called independent erosion and sediment control plan implementation monitor. And mine is called independent site sediment and erosion control plan implementation monitor, demolition phase and construction stabilization phase. It's, it's the same.
Let me, let me help you with that, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, this is really pretty simple. The, Erin has prepared a scope of work, that was she, she did early in the process, and then I'm sure spent a lot of time on it. That scope of work was extremely broad, I mean, it, it really created a czar-like soprano position where you could sit there with your folding chair and, and, and to me, it didn't, yeah, it didn't make a lot of sense, with all due respect.
Meatball grinders, you mean?
Meatball grinders, exactly. So, what I did was talked to Attorney Small, and she said, take a crack at drafting the, the scope of work, which is what I did, I've done that. It is the first draft. Attorney Small has now sent that draft to the engineering department, the water and sewer division, and to your environmental planner.
Which, which draft is yours? Is this, is it 10 and 11 of, of-
No, no, that's mine.
That's Erin's, I don't know that you've received mine, again, it's an early draft? Okay, I did, I know that Attorney Small sent it to, uh, the plant, the environmental planner.
It's-
Could be in this file.
Yeah, but I-
It dated November 5th, we, the scope of work, November 5th.
But I think if you look at Attorney Small's memorandum from today that's addressed to you, Mr. Chairman, and to Erin, she says in, in point number two, the key is to approve as a condition, the general terms, and the specifics will be determined by the town staff, so.
Well, it's, it's a draft, I don't think condition of approval has a draft in it.
Exactly.
You're, you're working, you're going to hire a person to be the monitor, you've got a draft, you've got a draft, it's got to go before Janice and all that.
Right.
I don't think that can be a condition of approval. A, a draft report, a draft, a condition approval, subject to inter, interdepartment review, draft.
You could just say a scope of work to be worked out by the law department, working with the planning and zoning, water division, and environmental-
Well, I think that already was said here, that you're going, Janice indicated that she's going to be in, in the middle of, uh, a monitor.
Yes, I'm saying for that scope of work, you could just have literally one sentence, if you want, and we could hash it out later between the departments.
That's correct.
But I think that, for the commission, the important thing for the commission to understand that it's not just your scope of work, it, we're going to, the Wetland Commission is going to-
No, see, that's the problem, I mean, you're, you want us to control every other department in town.
No, 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 I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying-
The opposite.
We're used, the commission's used to having control over whatever conditions it puts on something, or whatever, you know, whatever it requires. In this case, the, the monitor himself and his duties are going to be shaped by other agencies beside the Wetland Commission.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
That's why we're not going to label the total scope of work out. We say you, you need a monitor, and they say we'll hire a monitor, but we're not going to dictate the scope because you've got all the other departments, as you just explained.
Why I included, and I included this back, way back in September, was the scope of work, was for you to just think about it, that's all, to think about what this person is going to do. Just to think about what you, you might want this person to do something-
All I want him to do is to follow the plan. You paid money to have the plan reviewed, they paid money to draw the plan, they're willing to pay a monitor to enforce that the plan is, is followed. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
Erin, I, we charged you last month with, with a timeframe to get this all done. I'm listening to both sides now, it sounds like you did everything we asked you to do. It's, it's all in place, all right? Well, I think it's time we move forward. It's a little bit of language, it's called, uh, legal language, that's going to make this project work. But I believe you did your homework, and they did their homework, we're ready to move forward, because we're just going back and forth here, not getting anywhere, because you're saying the same thing. And that, everybody's looking at us like, what are they talking about? Because you're, you're just fine tuning what needs to be fine tuned by legal. So I think that you did what you were charged, so now we need to move forward as a commission. How we want to approve this, or we don't want to approve it, we don't need to bicker about, you know, weepage, or whatever else you've got concerns with, those are things, those are kindergarten questions. Weepage, every, you can dig a trench in your yard two feet deep and have weepage. This is something you should know, and it's, should have been addressed, uh, two months ago, and I'm sure Michelle has addressed it in her, in her prints, but I'm just sitting here trying to get the, where we're going with this, back and forth, back and forth, and I don't see where we're here, we, we need to move forward.
Okay, then, uh, all right, let's hold our thoughts here for a moment, because even if this gets to the point of being approved following, uh, conditions of approval, there's a, uh, there's, it's kind of an A and a B group, and we're coming up with a C group or something, and, and the wording of the approvals are, are maybe difficult. But this is a public hearing, and I'll open it up to the public that, who would like to speak at this time regarding this application. Name and address for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Jim Wolfe, I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission, and I, I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, this project has obviously been bigger than anything that's ever been handled by Erin before, and, uh, you've had a lot of patience with it, um, and your commission has had a lot of patience with it. Uh, I think the applicant has certainly, uh, answered every possible, um, situation that, that you've thrown at them. And, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Nick, it's time to move forward, we need to vote and get it going. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ed Bradley, Tohampton Trail. Before I begin, I learned a new term, it's been 30 years, maybe a little bit more than 30 years since I've been involved in this process, if those who remember Bristol Myers' quadulant, what is that?
What's-
I hear the term quadulant mentioned.
Quadulant?
Yeah.
Floculant?
Oh, floculant.
Oh, okay.
Floculant.
What, what is that?
You want to explain it to them?
I think the engineer can do a better job, but I could try.
It's, it's-
It's a polymer that you add to water that interacts on a chemical and physical level to make the-
Turbidity?
Soil particles fall out, so they precipitate out, so the water gets cleaner.
Okay, got it.
Floculant, it's white, it's a white, it's usually in logs, or you can have granular or logs of it.
Again, for those who remember Bristol, Bristol Myers', uh, I led the opposition to that project, as well as others in the Spring Lake area. I'm a homeowner, south, a little bit southwest on Hampton Trail of the Bristol Myers' site. At that time, there wasn't an inland wetlands, I worked closely with Stanley Pack, for those that remember, Marla Butts, Doug Cooper of DEP on that site. We all know the outcome from that disaster. You can't control that site, it will not be controlled in a large storm, unless technology has changed today than what it was back then. I mean, they threw everything at it, they threw holding ponds, wells, riprap, silt fencing, and we were inundated with red, what you now referred to is red water. Red water all the way down from that site, all the way down to Mackenzie Reservoir. Red water all the way down from that site, all the way down to Mackenzie Reservoir. My concern naturally is the watershed, the wells, the reservoir and Spring Lake. Spring Lake was severely damaged from all the silt and sediment that filled that lake. To date, we still have flooding in that area, even though I allowed engineering to put in another 18-inch drainage on the east side of my property. There's two pipes there now, a 16 and an 18. The muddy river main course flows through the east side of my property, through a 36 and back in Vamaco's day, they put in another 48. And to date, this last storm that we had, I don't know, what were we talking, five inches? Five and a half inches? It floods. Floods right across the street, floods my neighbor's garage. In the past, it took my pool out, goes through my yard. I'm in the process of even having a retaining wall put around my pool so it doesn't get washed out again. The concern I, I have, and I'm just getting up to speed on this. I hear east side bleed out and how that's gonna be retained. I mean, are we looking at another disaster area like from Bristol Myers? And also, is DEP involved in this?
DEP's involved. They need, they need DEP permits to open up this much land.
Okay.
Correct?
Just to let, just to let the developers know, we filed a public hearing for every permit that DEP went after. And we're willing to do that again to protect our area. I don't know how much envelopment there'll be, but the area's really changed. For those that remember, there used to be Miller's Pond right on the corner there of Williamson 68. That's no longer there. That was removed. That water that comes off their site now through the larger pond where the dam is, comes right on down through. And when Cedarwood or the Cedarwood development was put in in 93, that river, the muddy river, was diverted because construction equipment was run from that site to the homes that were built on Williams Road. The town knew about it, I reported it, they did nothing about it. To date, that river is diverted and that's the reason why we get a lot of water on the east side of Hampton Trail. Now, a, a gate valve was mentioned. What gate valve are you referring to? Is that the gate valve on the dam or is this a different gate valve?
When you say dam, what do you mean by dam?
When you drive into Bristol Myers property, the first pond, there's a wall there like a dam, and they control the runoff from that site. There's two ponds, the lower pond and the upper pond. As a matter of fact, when Bristol Myers first started construction, we were having all these problems, they even put in another sedimentation pond up on the north, northeast side of the property. But there is a gate valve there on that dam.
I think that's the one they're referring to.
Okay, who's gonna monitor that?
They have a monitor on it. That's part of this monitor that we talked about.
Okay, and who's gonna monitor the site? It seemed like every time we had a problem with Bristol Myers, it were the homeowners that had to call DEP to get them involved.
Well, in this case, you, you haven't been with us from the beginning.
That's correct, yeah.
That's fine, it's not a problem. But because of this site, this project being so large and the, and all the conditions that you, we wanted to watch out for all the conditions you mentioned. We requested that, one, they hire a, another engineer to review the plans primarily in the soil and erosion control site. So another engineer was hired and he had some additional thoughts on improving the plan and they incorporated it in their plan. So it was, they almost had a review of their own engineering department. Also, we wanted someone that was going to be available, I, I don't wanna say every day onsite, but onsite to make sure the contractor built the site as the plans were, were approved. Because we feel that the major part of this project, the success of this project is going to be in the contractor that's chosen. If it's a top quality contractor, this site has a much better chance of success than if it's a guy with a pick and shovel on it. And if you don't mind me a moment, I'll, I'll get into that red water going down. That's what the flocculent will prevent. And we've used the flocculent over at Choate School because we had the red water at the Kohler Center and it was amazing the success of the flock, flocculent.
Okay, the point, the point I.
And the next thing is the Miller Pond. This commission wanted that pond saved. We wanted the pond and all of a sudden, one weekend, the pond's blown apart.
Thanks to the state DEP.
That's correct, DOT. That's correct. They blew the pond out.
What happened, it used to flood there. And I seen DOT come in with sledgehammers and break off the top of the dam to let the water through.
Even though this commission wrote, that we were asked and we wrote to state the DOT that we wanted the pond to be able to have some kind of flood control.
The thing I wanna stress, and I know technology has changed, when that water comes down off that site, it's like Niagara Falls coming through that 36 and 48-inch pipe. I mean, it's actually shooting up into the air.
I remember the issues that I think you particularly had on your site, your, your property. But I, I, we've done everything we possibly can to prevent that. I don't know what we would do different now.
Hopefully.
I know what you think. I could read your lips.
Let me, what is the, I know Bristol Myers, the square footage is.
The same as this project.
It's about 1 million square feet.
1 million square feet. And that's about the same size as the project, this project.
And really, how much are we taking away as far as, what do I wanna say? Roof runoff versus absorption into the soil versus what Bristol Myers has?
Well, I think the, the real difference is Bristol Myers was five or six floors and this is one floor.
Right.
So I guess you could use a multiplier of five times the square foot.
Five times.
Five times the Bristol Myers roof, uh, square foot of roof.
And my understanding here and tonight, 457 square feet of wetlands to be filled?
That's, that's right. That's a reduction from the original 2,500 that they were looking for.
Now, I was talking with Erin earlier and it's up by the helipad? North, northeast?
It's kind of in the center, I think, kind of in the center of the, of the site below the heli, the helipad.
Because the muddy river runs right down to the east of the helipad.
If I, if I recall the plan, I think if you're looking at the muddy river running down the hill, it's to the left of that muddy river coming down. It's to the right?
To the right.
Excuse me, it's to the right of the muddy river.
Yeah, I've walked the site all the way up to, what is it?
High Hill.
Hope Hill.
High Hill.
High Hill Pond, where the headwaters of the muddy water originates. I know that site like the back of my hand. I had the blueprints to every building there. I have their sediment and erosion control maps. Probably have as much as Erin has there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Freeman, 5 Hampton Trail. I live across the street from Ed and I have wetlands in my backyard and muddy river runs right along the side of my house on the property line. So he's not kidding when he says that has some force behind it. When you get a good rain, you can hear that, you know, plowing through it, it sounds like a train. But my concerns, of course, are for flooding and well water contamination or if there's any blasting. It was mentioned that the amount of water that you could get from your well could possibly change as well. Wells could run dry. I'm not sure if that, I'm sure that was discussed.
Well, it was, it was determined in one of the previous meetings that the, the well issue is more a planning and zoning issue.
Okay.
And, and they, but they, they expect very little blasting onsite. They, they expect to be able to rip the top of the rock with excavator teeth rather than need for blasting.
Okay, well, I just, back to the flooding, I mean, I've seen it pretty bad where cars have had to turn around. Waves were actually hitting the sides of the cars that were trying to go through it, so. And we were in a flood zone ever since I moved in in 2007 and the residents had to play, pay flood insurance mandatory. Now we're finally not in a flood zone, we don't have to pay that insurance. Are we gonna end up having to pay insurance again because we're gonna be back in a flood zone? Are we gonna be responsible for paying it because somebody changed things?
We're, all I can say is we've worked very hard at trying to prevent that kind of condition happening over again. I don't, I'm, I know Mr. Bradley will tell me if it, if it wasn't his house, it was the house next door, you opened the garage door and they went in the garage door and you opened the back door of the garage and it went out the back door of the garage.
I know that house, yeah, right across from me too.
Yeah, so it was just a.
I've seen Ed's pool get destroyed from it.
I'm sorry?
I saw Ed's pool, it was destroyed from that water coming through, so it's, it's a real thing. It's a very much of a concern.
We've worked very hard to try and prevent that.
Okay, I'm sure Bristol Myers people said that too when they were making their.
But the only difference is we weren't here when Bristol Myers came in.
Okay. Well, that's all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jack Aragoni, 18 Martin Trail, around the corner from Ed. I sent you a letter in the PMZ. I just wanna elaborate about the well. I did have my well checked about a week ago, two weeks ago. The chlorides, I didn't know much about it before then, now I understand where they come from. In 83 and 85, when I had the well checked, they were reading about 65. This last reading, they're at 120. That's over 30 years span, so I guess my question.
But I like your comment that said road salt. But I like your comment that it was from road salt.
That's what I found from the internet. It's very clear, that's where it comes from. It's not just this project, it's, it's the roads. The roads are getting wider, more and more roofs, more tarred area. Ed just talking about, and I mentioned it before, the runoff is unbelievable, the way that river flows now. I guess my question is, if it took 30 years to double, is it gonna take another 30 years to double again? Which puts me at the max limit. I'm kinda thinking it's gonna kind of, it's gonna grow faster, it's gonna increase faster. I hope not, but.
Nothing to do with this application, but the, the new stuff they're spraying on the roads, who knows what it's gonna be in the wells? At least the one that was salt, you knew it was salt, this stuff. It's probably more rust coming off the cars rusting apart.
I guess that's true with the, not the straight salt, but the potassium. That is true. It's supposed to be better for the ground, but that remains to be seen.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could enter into the record, three, three letters that came in. One was from Tom and Louise LaButis, 1232 Barnes Road. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but they're concerned about filling of the wetlands. They feel it sets a precedent and consequences to loss of recharge of groundwater. Okay. Next letter was from the gentleman who just spoke, Jack Aragoni. I did send a copy of this one out in your packet only because it came in in time to include it. And the other letter came in today was, it's from Brian Freeman, gentleman who spoke a few minutes ago, and it's quite detailed. He talks about well water contamination, flooding, flood zones, contamination of muddy river in Spring Lake, increased truck traffic and noise. And it goes on, but I'll put these in the record.
The, I think what we're finding on any, any project or just living, living these days, especially right now, we have almost double the rainfall since September. That is average right now. There's a lot more water coming down, there's a lot more tarred surfaces and it's everywhere. Doesn't have to be under a construction site that we're having these problems or issues, I promise. Okay. Commissioners, any comments? Ally?
No.
Nick?
No, I just wanna say that listening to this for the last couple of months, I, I think we've done 100% what we can do. It's, I'm comfortable with the, the legal end of it, the wordage. I'm comfortable with the, we've picked it apart, Georgia's picked it apart, you guys have come back more and more times. A lot of this stuff is, is a, there's room still for field changes that we, we talk about because it's not like they're gonna shut down for three months and go to the Florida and let the thing just sit there and ferment. They talked about flooding, I'm hoping that your design is gonna prevent what they're talking about with the residents downstream because I think we've, the town has gone in there and kind of mandated or repaired those problems, so it's livable with Mr. Bradley and his neighbors. So I, I feel very comfortable that you've, you've gone and done 100% what needs to be done on this site to make it work. And I believe that it's all, like Jim says, it's the contractor. If he's a professional contractor, he's gonna do a good job. He's gonna be conscious of what he's doing out there because he knows how sensitive it is. And I think in the last three or four months, we've made it aware how sensitive it is. So I'm comfortable as far as moving forward.
Hey?
I think Nick put it all together correctly.
Evy?
I know we spent almost four months on this, but we would be remiss in our responsibilities as commissioners if we didn't take the time to go over all the details. And I think you've done a very complete job.
I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Kern had said. When I first started this whole project, the engineer came out with a detailed plan on how to alleviate this water situation. And I behoove you to actually review that plan, maybe help give you some insight on how this whole project will go forward. That's to help, help you guys understand what's happening.
Okay. We keep talking about the contractor, but, and none of the approvals, and I don't think it needs to be there, but we'd like to probably know who the contractor is somewhere along this process on that. Okay, if there's no other comments, then I think I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, but, but, but. The, if you, if you're going, if the motion is going to be incorporated, the comments or the conditions of approval, how are we going to designate between the two? We gonna use the, the BL comments or conditions of approval? Because there's a couple in errands that they're not going to agree to.
You know what you could do? Mr. Chairman, make the motion. What you could do, Mr. Chairman, make the motion. And I'm just gonna start with this and I'll say, subject to the conditions of approval, it's approved in this as shown in this letter from BLS. If we get it, okay. And if the motion gets approved, these are conditions and the motion is approved. If people, if there's a serious objection to it, then of course the motion would fail. And then you could go and consider the, we could do it with errands, conditions of approval.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, do you want to close the public hearing and then enter deliberate?
Oh, this is a good idea, okay.
Okay, I want to hang on just a minute, though, that's, that's excellent, excellent errand, but, okay, so that, that is one, that's one.
That's one way to do it.
But does, your conditions of approval, which, which, similar to errands or almost identical to errands, is it handles the scope of work by the monitor to be determined at a later time?
That's the biggest difference.
But yours includes that item.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, Aaron, I don't know if this is specifically the right time, but it's going to be, it's gotta be, it should be tonight. You brought up a comment that they're running a gas line to the daycare center. And there was, it's not on your plan, on the original plan?
No, it is.
It is on the original plan? Okay, so we've already, we've already reviewed it. So if we approve their plan tonight, it encompasses the gas line going to the daycare center?
Yes.
Right, okay, all right. Any other comments from the public? Yes, Ed? Those, those chairs were designed for 18-year-old kids, you know?
Well, when I was on the council, we wanted them removed, but the historic committee overruled this. On the bond, who's posting the bond? Is it them or the contractor?
The applicant, the owner of the property.
Okay, so the owner of the property then is responsible for any downstream damage.
Right, and I, I think chances are he's going to probably have the contractor post some bonds also. But you may have more than, the bond's gonna cover more than one, probably one, it's gonna cover more than one contractor will be doing.
Does the issue with the bond, the amount come up here or is that P and Z?
No, we, we worked out a value of the bond and we were in the $290,000 bracket. And engineering added another $20,000 or so, so.
So for 318?
318, 419.
Okay, thanks.
Of which they agreed to. Okay, no other comments? Then I will close the public hearing at 8:14. Okay, gang, we, we've spent time, I think we've, everyone has spent a lot of time. Aaron has spent a tremendous amount of time, the applicant has spent time, our peer engineer has spent time, so. If, does this commission feel that they can vote on it tonight? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that application A 18-6.2/5 Research Parkway, owned by 5 Research Parkway, well-interred LLC, be approved with the conditions of approval as this is set forth in a letter from the BL company, an undated letter from BL company, which is before us today.
Okay, there, there, there's no date on this letter, but the, the heading on the letter is condition of approvals. Okay, the motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Offer a vote?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, before you go too much further, because this is a significant impact activity, you must comply with section 10.3. I handed out a copy of it tonight. It's a, it's a two-sided thing. It says on the top, considerations for decision. And so section 10.3 is when it's a significant activity, a permit shall not be issued unless the commission finds on the basis of the record that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. In making this finding, the commission shall consider the facts and circumstances set forth in subject sections 10.2, which is on this, the other flip side. And this finding and the reasons therefore shall be stated on the record.
Okay, now, wait a minute, there's a motion made, we're under the discussion phase of the motion, so we've got to take this. Is a statement in the discussion side of the motion satisfactory to 10.3 slash 10.2?
I think the chairman can sum it up. I don't think everybody has to go through and give their own.
I can sum it up under these discussions right now. Doesn't have to be, there's a motion on the floor. I think I can sum it up right now unless, unless, go ahead, Nick.
Mr. Chairman, is, by us accepting this application tonight as it is, is, is we've reviewed the feasible and alternative ways that this site could be developed because we're taking the best for the site?
Are you asking, did we do that?
Yes, I'm asking you if this is.
The applicant reviewed the alternatives, oh, and think at the second public hearing, maybe?
Right, that's what I'm saying. We've already gone through these motions with them on the second application. So that's been done, so.
Second hearing, well, here you're affirming that, in other words, you can't approve a significant impact activity unless you state that there is no feasible and prudent alternative, that's.
That's what I'm saying, but you just said on the second meeting, he brought that up, feasible and alternative. It's been done already.
If you, if you agree with that, yes. So you have to, you have to confirm that it, there is no prudent or feasible alternative, if you agree.
By vote or just the chairman?
Consensus, consensus, maybe, and then the chairman could put it all together.
They, for, not a technicality, but for, for to satisfy that section of our regulation is, is before we vote on this application, does anyone have any comments regarding a feasible and prudent alternative to this application? Certainly, there seemed, they came out with the first plan and I think the prudent and feasible alternative was the second plan. That's the improvement part of the plan. As far as anything else, I can't visualize anything that would make a prudent, feasible and prudent plan better than what's, what's here. I know some people would, but then we wouldn't be sitting here. So if anybody has any comments regarding feasible and prudent, if not, we'll, we'll accept that they have explored all the feasible and prudent alternatives.
I think so.
Okay, all right, there's a motion made, any other discussion on the, on the motion, on this application? Yes or no? You all set?
I would say something like finding no prudent and feasible alternatives, we, we therefore approve this with the following conditions of approval.
That would be mine.
You've already got a motion out here now, you can't be throwing things in the mission, motion.
You could have someone remove that motion and make the other one. And as far as, I just have one more comment. If, when you go ahead and approve it with the conditions, if you could, for the scope, I, I know Commissioner Parent wanted to go ahead with the BL version of it. If you're gonna use the BL version or the applicant version, just, I, I would prefer if the scope of work was just one sentence, sentence. If you're not gonna use mine, then, or my suggested one, like one sentence, just the scope, with the scope of work to be flushed out with the law department in collaboration with the planning, zoning and water division or something like that. Just keep it real simple. If you want to go ahead and do his, I mean, do the applicant's.
It's gonna, it's gonna happen anyway, it's gonna happen anyway. I don't, I don't, where, where is your discussion on scope of work on a monitor?
It's paragraph three on the second page. It's the second bullet and as a matter of fact, the very last sentence says the terms of the monitor's engagement will be drafted and agreed by, between the town's legal representative, Janet Small, the applicant's attorney and me, prior to the commencement of any site work, which is consistent with the memorandum that you received today from Attorney Small. So I think it's already in there.
I'm sorry, where are you reading, Dennis?
I'm reading the third condition of approval, the second bullet, which is on the top of the second page, the last sentence.
So I think it's in there.
The third, your version, your version, that we got on October 29, that version, on the second page.
First bullet at the top, last sentence.
You're agreeing with all that that was written in there?
That's right.
Okay, let's call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, okay, now that takes care of the gas main, too.
I'm sorry, did, was, did everyone vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay, going on to old business, application A 18-9.1, 6 Research Parkway. Are they ready? 6, 6 Research Parkway?
They didn't tell me they would not be here today.
I'm sorry?
Oh, okay, well, you got my environmental planners report, oh, here's Dennis, yes, okay.
Oh, okay.
Attorney said that even wears the mini hats.
You had written here, not ready on the temporary, are they ready?
No, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna ask that it be continued to the December meeting.
Okay, that's fine. You're gonna run out of time.
We would consent any extension required through your December meeting. Again, there's a, there's a question about sand filter use in this particular project. I know that there's been a conversation between our engineer and Mr. Kruger and they're just trying to resolve that last issue.
What's the question regarding the sand filter?
It's the grade of the existing property. Is there an alternative to a sand filter? You'd have to bring about two and a half feet of fill into the site to make the sand filter work from a grade perspective. And again, I'm not an engineer, but it's, that's what I would say.
All the site?
Entire site, yeah, it's that flat. So there's discussion and Mr. Kruger's been very helpful. It's just a question of getting his time and just agreeing on the specifics.
Okay, all right, now, Aaron, you hear that they're going, they're willing to give any extension necessary. So between the two of you, you'll keep that extension program up?
Now, I'll give Aaron a writing to that effect, even though you're on, I think we're on camera.
Okay, what else are you here for tonight?
988, the Nosa violation.
What's that, in East Center Street?
Yes.
Okay, what's, let's take care of that right now, then, what's, what's the status on that? Aaron's got a report out there.
Yeah, there was, Aaron was trying to come out to the site, meet us. Here's our engineer. Aaron met us out at the site. I would encourage any of the commissioners who haven't had the opportunity yet to go out and take a look, only because we've, we've sprayed some lines, because it's really difficult, it was, it was difficult for me at least to figure out what was happening over there at the site. You may recall, this was an issue about some unauthorized fill behind that existing building on 988 East Center Street. And when, and we've retained an engineering firm, we've also retained, retained the soil scientist, Mr. Lord. And we've, we've begun our, our plan to come to for purposes of remediation and mitigation, et cetera. The portion of the land that actually has been filled is, is more modest than it appears when you first take a ride around the back. But in any event, there is a, there is a memorandum that came out from Rob Ultra Midas about doing certain work, having a manhole installed on the work that was done connecting a couple of pipes. We believe that by next month, we'll be prepared to provide you with a resolution that I, I think will be acceptable to this commission.
You know, we've had this discussion, of course, here it talks about unauthorized regulation activity, filling has, filling in a wetland area. That's from, from the town engineer. But you've, you've, what are you doing with the upland review area? Are you putting it back to grass?
The upland review area, it really depends on what the commission would like to have done out there. And again, if you, if you have an opportunity, you may have driven back there, I'm not sure, but it's, the proposal, and again, Mr. Lord's not here tonight, but the proposed remediation or mitigation plan will take your existing wetlands and improve it. I mean, that's the idea, to come back to you with something that's actually better than what it was before, because I think.
With a, with a driveway, with a turnaround driveway?
We may not, we may not need that driveway. I mean, one of the reasons, this hall was generated by the fact that there's an application that no longer is pending in front of P and Z to take out some of that mound in the front of the, of the, of the property so that the trucks could do their turnaround there and then the back wouldn't be necessary, but we're.
But it wasn't necessary in the beginning, it was an afterthought.
When he took away all of the debris that was in your wetlands, that was really the issue. When he took the debris away and tried what he thought was fixing up an unattractive site. And we've got letters in the file that we'll be offering to you from neighbors who are thankful that the site is, is better. And again, I'm not a soil scientist, I can just tell you that in meeting Mr. Lord out there twice now and Aaron was at the last meeting out at the site this week, I think it was this week?
Yes, this week, yes.
Well, it, it appears as if, you know, we'll be able to come back to you with something that, without being presumptuous, I think will satisfy this commission. We, we recognize how important it is to you and that's what our, our plans are.
Did you do anything with the environmental impact as far as what's going down in the storm sewers?
Yeah, that, you know, those piles over there turn out to be sand. As opposed to ash, I think last time we talked about that. So that was encouraging. That's all, of course, on the railroad site. What I didn't recognize is as you look at the site, probably the, a good third of the land from the track west is still railroaded land, I thought it was my client's property, so you'll, there's markings out there now. A lot of the work that had been done in terms of filling was done by the railroad. So that's why we need to come back to you and tell you what we're willing to do in the back or what we're hoping you'll approve in the back. And I can tell you that the plan is going to take, with your approval, wetlands that provided stormwater storage as its only function and improve it to stormwater capacity function and some sort of botanical life to it. So we're trying to increase the function of that wetlands and that's the plan when we come back to you.
Okay, well, all right, okay, okay, you all done that for tonight?
I hope so.
Okay, all right, so.
Although I enjoy being here, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me?
Although I enjoy being here.
Then you should have stayed till it be the last applicant tonight, you would have been all set.
Thank you.
Because we'll be here until then. All right, 6 Research, you're all set then?
All set, thank you.
Okay, 6, 6 Research is taken care of. Application A 18-10.1, this is 1178 Barnes Road, Shields Hotels. Now, they're not here tonight, correct?
Uh, they were. Oh, he's here, yes, and there's materials to be handed out.
All right, okay, do we want to hand it out now or do we want to pick it up to go? You're gonna present, present on an easel?
Yeah, I was.
Okay, then you want to hold up on the plans?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, go ahead. Yeah, you just, go ahead. You can use our easel if you'd like. You may want to pull that forward if everybody, everybody can see okay? You want to be sure to use the microphone? Another P L? Boy. Okay.
Lou? Are we ready to proceed? Good evening. For the record, my name's John Schmitz. I'm a civil engineer with BL Companies, Meriden, Connecticut, representing the applicant Shields Hotels in North Hampton, Massachusetts. With me here tonight is Scott Stevens with Soil Science Environmental Services. He's the soil scientist on this project who flagged the wetlands for us. The site is 1175 Barnes Road. It's on Route 68, the south side. I'll just point out in general, the site's bordered on the north. The other side of Barnes Road is Connecticut Food Bank. To the west is I-91, the, I-191, northbound off-ramp to Route 68. To the east of our site is the Hilton Garden Inn property. We would share site access at that driveway. And to the south of us is the Ring Rose property, which is currently undeveloped. Our site is approximately six and a half acres. It's also undeveloped at this time, mostly wooded. There are a few abandoned wooden structures on the property, some stone walls. The majority of the site is wooded. There are some clearings closer to the intersection in this area as well as some wetlands. At this time, I'm just gonna ask Scott to come up and just give a brief explanation of what he found on site.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Scott Stevens. I'm a registered professional soil scientist with Soil Science Environmental Services out of Rocky Hill, Connecticut. On June 22nd, 2018, we conducted a site inspection of the property to classify out the different types of soils on the site and to delineate any regulated wetland or water course areas that we found on the property. Basically, I have two different wetland systems. There's one on the western side of the site. That we, we delineated the, the wetland on the western side of the site with flags numbers one through 21 and 22 through 31. There's also an intermittent water course that flows out of a storm, I believe it's mostly storm drainage, but could come from maybe another wetland across 68. It was flowing at the time of our site inspection. And it, intermittently flows all the way through this wetland and eventually heads off-site to the south. And then there's another wetland that we delineated sort of on the south side of the site. And that was with flag numbers 32 to 52. And that, that one actually periodically ponds water for short periods of time. When I was there this summer, it was probably a drier time and I don't think there's really too much water in there at the time that I was there. But there was evidence that it can pond for, you know, short durations of time. The different types of soils, as far as the wetland soil types, I had mainly Wilbraham and Menlo in both the wetlands. Also some areas of aquents which are disturbed wetland soils on the wetland, on the south side of the site. And then right up on the northern part of this wetland on the western side of the site where the, where the, I guess it's a 36-inch pipe, it's quite a large pipe, where that discharges, it was probably excavated out. So we call that uterfluence in there. I think it's kind of a disturbed soil and it, it also floods out periodically. As far as the upland soils on the property, most of the site is Cheshire fine sandy loam, moderately well-drained, deep reddish-colored glacial till soils. There's, are some areas along the edges of the wetlands, small fringes of walkchog, moderately well-drained soils. And then there's also a few areas where there was some uterfence. Around the, there was an old existing house and a barn. There's some filled areas around there. Also by the entrance to the Hilton or in that area, I think there's been some disturbed soils. And then definitely just south of the wetland on the eastern side of the southeastern side of the site, a lot of disturbance around that wetland. Then just on the south side, we were just talking about that, there's a, apparently a man-made or bio-retention area wetland. That's, it's not really shown on this map, but it's down in the far southern part of the site, might even be off-site. It's part of the Hilton Garden probably. I couldn't really exactly knew where the, it's so thick in there, I didn't really know where the property boundaries were at the time that I was looking at. I saw the stone wall, but then it just got so thick in there, I wasn't really sure exactly where it was. Trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
What about, do you think the water's coming from to fill this pond right here, up on the, the eastern side?
Right here?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't see any water courses really coming into it or out of it. So I think it's just a, to me, it looked like a, a big excavate, deep excavated area that the water just kind of seeps out of the hillside.
So it's coming out of the hillside?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't see any water, intermittent water courses or pipes going into it or out of it.
So is that coming from the northern part of the property coming down?
No, there is water. It's, he's, um, John's got some pictures of it in like a shallow swale that, that during heavy rainstorm events, the stormwater runoff, I think just kind of flows down a shallow swale. And it does kind of go into this area. It, it may kind of seep in there somehow or another, but there wasn't any evidence of any permanent defined channels or anything like that that way.
I think, I think that may have been an intentional retention pond when the project, when the area was approved 20 years ago, that there was a depression in there and that was being, being used as a detention, retention area.
Oh, if I could ask a question of, about these swales that are coming off, the uncontrolled water coming off the Hilton Garden, how are you gonna address that? I know it's not on you, in other words, it's their problem, but it's spilling the water into a not defined channel on your property. So it's a problem. And how are we gonna move forward with that?
Right. So just so everybody's familiar with what Aaron's referring to, there are some photos in the comment response letter at the very end. There's some leak-offs. The way that Hilton Garden Inn was designed and approved, they have a lot of, their stormwater sheet flows off their parking lot at various leak-offs. And that approval, and we show some of the leak-offs on our plan, but their approval was to leak off that water into a swale and bring that down around to a bio-retention basin and then further down their, their detention system, their sand filters are at the far east end. In reality, they, their swale, their shallow depression was constructed on our side of the property line. So as Aaron indicated, that water flows onto our property instead of staying on their property. And at this time, we're not proposing any work in that area. So it, it doesn't affect, you know, our development at this time. But I understand that as an enforcement action, it could be an issue for, for the town.
Yes, they're not allowed to spill water willingly onto your property, number one. But number two, it's not even a defined channel. It's just spilling on and making ruts in the, in the grass. So it's just not acceptable. So yes, I guess I will pursue it against the Hilton Garden and they'll get it spiffed up back to where the plan was supposed to be built. And then that would make it go away. The issue would go away.
Yeah, we have not spoke, I mean, you brought this to my attention recently and we haven't spoken to anyone at Hilton Garden about it at this time. But I did, we were out there a week ago and it rained and that's why we took the photos because we wanted to get an idea of exactly where that water was going.
My other question was for the wetland scientist. So when that little pond slash old former farm pond slash retention basin, whatever you want to call it, fills up like in a big rain, it overflows, where does it go?
Um, to my, to my best recollection, it's fairly deep. I think it's maybe like six or eight feet deep.
Yeah.
And I, I never saw like any, if it did spill out, it would obviously be somewheres over in this area. And I never saw any evidence of any flow out of it. So I think it pretty much contains it all.
Right. Well, maybe the engineer could answer. You're gonna use that, you're proposing to dump stormwater into there. So there's gotta be, well, what's your proposal, what's your proposal for an outlet for that?
Do you want me to run through the site plan, grading and drainage?
No, 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 I'm the chairman. Come on over there here. All right. Listen, you haven't said anything yet. All you've done is identified some wetlands area. I would like you to continue with your presentation. And what are you building there? What's going on?
Absolutely.
Okay. A lot of the things you're dealing with Aaron, I'm sure you can deal with her in her office. But would, I'd like to know what's going on for project.
Sure. With regards to the project, excuse me, with regards to the project, we're proposing a, a four-level hotel, 120 units or rooms in the hotel attached to a 7,297 square foot restaurant. As you can see, the access for the hotel, we do propose 218 parking spaces. Access would be off of the main driveway. We would be sharing with, with Hilton Garden Inn. Our driveway would come in almost directly opposite theirs from the main driveway. So we would, we would have access through Route 68 at the traffic signal. We have pavement around the entire building. Let me just get my notes. We've got approximately 120,300 square feet worth of impervious area on site. And we have approximately 18,585 square feet of disturbance in the buffer area. That includes disturbance in the buffer to the intermittent water course here, as well as disturbance in the upland review area to the farm pond at this location. With regards-
Disturbance as in reseating lawn?
Well, some of it, yes. Now, in some instances, in the buffer, this, this driveway would be in the buffer. We have a retaining wall in the buffer here. In this area as well, a portion of this driveway through here and the retaining wall would be in the buffer. So obviously that's not restored. In these areas, here, here we have stormwater discharges where we're, where we'd be collecting our stormwater throughout the site. We are in the Mackenzie River watershed. So we've met with Wallingford Water and Sewer. We discussed the, the requirements for sand filters to treat water quality. We have two of those proposed, one at the rear, one at the front. The systems are designed to take the flows and match or reduce the peak, peak rate of runoff from the two, 10, 25, 100-year storms. So we have three discharge points. One would be at this location toward the pond. And then two other discharge points would be here and here towards the wetlands. So we split it up. What we try to do is mimic what's going on today. So there is some, even though there's no streams, you know, there's no streams putting water into this pond, there is, this pond does receive some, some runoff from, sheet flow runoff from the upper part of the site. So what we're trying to do is mimic what's going on today with, and as you can see here, there's kind of a, a drainage divide at this spot. So a lot of the water to this side, to the west side of the divide runs here. The rest of it runs towards this, towards the pond. Some of it runs off-site here. Some of it runs off-site here. We did talk briefly about the leak-offs that run from Hilton Garden. They run and discharge down in this area. They don't make it into the pond. So what we're proposing is three, three discharge points. And each of the discharge points we're proposing is a level spreader. So what that'll do is as, instead of having like a single point discharge, like a flared end, we do is we create a level spreader. It's a, it's more or less a trench in the ground on various lengths. The water can come in and then as it's discharged, it kind of bubbles up out of the stone trench and then sheet flows across the, across the ground. So we try to mimic, again, what's going on. It, it results in less erosive velocity of the flows. So that's why we chose that. Again, we have, for the water, for the standards in the, in the regulations for water and sewer, we have oil grit separators, we have the, the sand filters, and then we have detention systems which also act as infiltration. So we get the water to infiltrate into the, into the ground.
How about roof drainage?
So we have two, we've kind of split the system up. We've taken the roof from the proposed restaurant and put it into its own system at this location for infiltration and then discharge it at this location. And then the main roof from the hotel would come off on the east side and be tied into the, tied into the underground infiltration system at this location. So neither of the roofs go through the sand filter because it's more or less clean water. So those are discharged to the groundwater through infiltration and then outlet at the, at the level spreaders. There is a plan, let's see. We also created a erosion control plan that, we developed an erosion control plan based on the Connecticut guidelines of soil erosion sediment control. Again, our main driveway here, so we have various best management practices that we've incorporated into design, a, a anti-tracking, stone anti-tracking apron at this location. We also added into the notes, there's sections about street sweeping, making sure that we keep the driveway as well as Route 68 clean of, of any sediment that would get tracked off. We've got sediment stockpiles. The site, limits of disturbance are ringed with silt fence on the downslope sides. We have two temporary sediment traps. One would be at this location. Another temporary sediment trap would be at this location. And then the, there would be swales to bring water into those temporary sediment traps during construction. Some of the sloped areas, we would provide, we would provide erosion control blankets to keep the sediment on the slopes in place until the site is stabilized. And all the erosion control would stay in place until the site is fully stabilized. And then I did want to just show you a quick shot. I think somebody had mentioned before, the site was approved back in 2008. And I just kind of wanted to show you as a comparison what was approved previously. This was the 2008 plan. It was a three-story office building and parking lot, very similar, you know, how, how they used the site, how we used the site. They however, were using the pond as a, as a detention basin itself. They were burmied up and using that pond for detention. We are taking our detention and putting it underground as opposed to, to using the pond. But other than that, it's a very similar type setup. I'm not sure the amount of disturbance here. I'm guessing we're a little bit less disturbed than what they had, what was previously approved. I'd be happy to answer any, any further questions. Again, we did respond to the comments in the, in the letter that we recently submitted. I don't know if staffs had a chance to look at them. I just, we just submitted them on Monday.
Nick?
Do you have a snow shelf for that or you're just gonna, in the parking lot? Or you're gonna put your snow and ice and stuff, winter months?
The snow would be plowed to the perimeter of the parking lot, into, into the grass areas. I think a lot of times with snow, what we're trying to do is that any pollutants that get caught in the snow, when it does melt, you want to make sure that the pollutants just don't run right into the wetlands. You want to make sure that it gets into the storm drainage system. So I think for, for the most part, in most of the areas where it would get plowed, as it melts, it would still end up draining into the catch basin so it could get through the oil grit chambers and into the sand filter.
So it's a normal sand and salt application? There's no special limited as far as applications?
As far as I know at this time, it would just be standard, you know, I mean, I, I think in the sidewalk areas, you know, it's, we see less and less salt because the salt corrodes the sidewalks. So it's always a maintenance issue. So it's probably more just sand, I think, in those areas.
Dave?
No comment.
Debbie?
No comment.
All right.
No comment.
The, what I, what I don't, it looks like you're not leaving us much buffer area enough to, around wetlands, especially with that driveway in the back. I, I, I mean, we're always looking for biofilters as well as sand filters and other things. And we're always looking for biofilters as well as sand filters and other things. Any suggestions?
Thinking, you know, I, I think the easiest thing to do, easiest spot, if we're talking about some, some extra treatment for that, would be, you know, as far as where we are, I mean, staff had asked us about, you know, if we could shift these further away to, to provide a little bit extra buffer to the, to the wetlands before discharge. And, you know, the only issue we had there was, we still need to discharge at a certain elevation, so we'd still have to do enough clearing to make sure that we could get that to go. I was just wondering if we tried to, you know, create some areas, you know, adjacent to the, to the out, to the, you know, where we're outletting the water. If there's, you know, there's possibly some, some opportunity to create, you know, like a, a wet pond or something.
Okay, that, that, that small area, that detention pond that seems to have no outlet, that source of water now is coming off of your roof drainage system?
Under the proposed condition?
Uh, yes.
Under the proposed, it would, it would basically be fed by the discharge from the level spreader.
But the level spreader is for what system?
Well, it's a combination of both the roof drain as well as the, the parking lot. We could separate it, we could separate the outlets.
Is it going to be able to handle the parking lot? You don't know with no outlet?
I'm sorry, oh, you're saying can, can this pond?
Right.
Well, today, what we're doing is, well, again, when we studied the, the drainage, we looked at the model to set up and see, well, how much water is going there today? And we modeled that, and then under the proposed design, we're, we're matching that peak discharge.
But you've certainly got impervious surface in your proposal.
Correct.
Compared to what's there now.
That's correct. But because, and so there's, so the impervious surface results in an increase in stormwater runoff, and that's why we have the detention system to make, to make up for that increase. I mean, it's, I think it'd be easy enough to, you know, separate out the, the roof water from this system and just break off the, you know, break the system apart and put that into the pond. But the idea was that we were going to try and get a lot of the, the roof water infiltrated into the ground.
I think we still, we still would like that. That still is viable, but more than the parking lot water. You're gonna run the parking lot water in the same, in the, in the same level spreader? Underground system? No?
That's correct, yes. But the parking lot first goes through the oil grit chamber, then it goes into a sand filter here, and once it's filtered through all that media, then it goes into the underground system where there's some additional infiltration before it would discharge.
Oh, I, I have a question, because I haven't gotten this far with the application. When you're gonna discharge water into that little pond, are you going to alter the pond? In other words, it's just gonna be natural, you're gonna change the berm on the pond or take out the, there's button bush, button bush growing there, it's a swamp plant. Are you gonna change it or just leave it as it is and just add water to it?
At this time, we just propose to leave it as is. I mean, we're discharging, you know, 15, 20 feet uplands of the, of the wetland flagging, so we do not propose any changes or work in the pond.
I guess I'm confused about how much water that little pond can take. More water, additional, you know, flows from your parking lot, how, how much more can it handle?
Well, again, we're, we're, we're matching the, the flows that are going there today, the peak flow that we've calculated. So the, so the, the flows that are going there today will be going there in the future and any increase we're detaining. So it'll operate the same as it would operate today. If it, if there was too much water or if it, if it filled up, I think I, on the last sheet of the, the handout, was kind of the exhibit showing, here's the pond, here's how the, the grades, the contours go. So at some point, that's the, that's the one. So at some point, you know, there's a tipping point where it, it fills up, and if it's five feet, six feet, eight feet, it's gonna release somewhere. We've gone out there looking to see if there's a pipe or an outlet or a ditch, and we've never found anything. But at some point, when it gets high enough, it would overflow, which is what happens today, and the same condition would, would happen in the future.
What's gonna be your underground storage capacity in the parking lot?
Uh, this system here, let me just read off the plan, has a proposed volume of 5,500 cubic feet in this system. And the system back here is sized at approximately 6,700 cubic feet of volume.
And what does that relate to in terms of, as far as storm, storm impact? 10-year storm, 20-year storm?
It's designed for the 100-year.
100-year storm?
Right, yeah, up to, up to 100-year storm, so there's no increase in the 100-year storm.
So you're gonna, you're gonna store underground 100 years' worth of rainwater before you'll see any alteration in the, well?
No, well, we're always discharging water. So it's just the, the increase that we're-
Right.
There's always gonna be water, you know, I shouldn't say always, but, you know, if you have a 10-year event or 25 or 100, there's still gonna be water coming out and getting into the pond. But, but the difference between, you know, when we pave it, there's gonna be more runoff. What we do is we hold that water in the detention system.
Okay.
Systems. Aaron, are, are, have we seen everything that we should see on this application?
Well, I had lots of comments, which I put to the project engineer, and that's what I handed out tonight, was his response to the comments. I haven't read them. So I guess, I haven't read the responses, I guess, were you able to move back the level spreaders?
No, the, the issue with the spreaders is that, you know, where they are, they're at a certain elevation. In order to get everything to drain, they're, you know, we're, we're trying to hit a certain elevation. So, so for instance, you know, with this level spreader, you know, we're discharging at an elevation of, you know, 334 feet. So we can pull that back, say 10 or 15 or 20 feet, but we still have to discharge at the elevation of 334, which means that we have to clear the land, excuse me, we have to clear the land from where we are today, all the way back 20 feet, because the, the land's sloping up. Does that, does that make sense?
What would be your reason, Aaron, to want to kick the level spreaders back? Not sure why, what would you, why would you want to have those spreaders pulled back?
So the water can filter a little bit before it gets to the wetland, you know, run over some rocks, I don't know.
What if you pull them back, it's gonna, it's gonna go through the level spreader quicker, where if the level spreader's further out, it's gonna, it's gonna work, it's gonna work harder and better the further away from it is on the outlet structure. It's gonna-
Wait, so you want it close to the wetland? You want the level spreader discharged at the wetland?
Well, no, in between the wetlands and the discharge point of the pipe. You're, you're telling the, you want to kick the level spreaders back into the pipe? Maybe I misunderstood you.
Further away from the wetlands.
Oh, further away from the wetlands, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And, and the other, Mr. Chairman, you asked what other thing. The other thing is to, it's a pending thing, I don't know if the response, what the response says yet, but I'm not sure of what work is allowed to be conducted in the access right away. There's a 50, 60-foot right away to the Ringrose property. And I'm not, you know, it's a legal question, I'm not sure what this hotel project is allowed to do within that 50-foot right away easement. It's called an access easement. I don't know what you're allowed to do, I don't know how far you've gotten.
When, when I had looked into that, and what it is, actually, it's a, there's a 60-foot easement, and as the, the survey notes, it's a 60-foot access and utility easement in favor of Thomas Ringwall, Ringrose. So the easement is on our property, or our owner granted an easement to Ringrose for access and utilities. So we are granting them permission to build a driveway and bring all the utilities they need to this property. So there's no restriction on my, on the owner, and we're, we're not building anything in the easement besides connecting our driveway to the existing driveway. And if they were to develop, they would simply extend the driveway. And we couldn't stop them from extending the driveway because we gave them an easement, allowing them, giving them permission to have access.
I thought you had a corner of your parking area in that 60-foot easement.
I think you're right, there's, there's a, the very corner of that spot is, is, is over the easement line. Again, it's probably 15 or 20 feet away from the existing edge of the driveway. So it certainly wouldn't preclude extending the driveway further down. They're not going to take the driveway and widen it to a six-lane, you know, driveway.
It's, it's within the 60-foot easement, right?
The, the very corner of that parking spot is, that's correct.
Like 10 feet or?
No, like two feet, maybe, two feet, one foot?
Well, we have another month to, to digest this.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yes, he's just presenting tonight, yes.
I mean, I don't know if that's more of a zoning issue, because it's, if you're talking about the legal, it's, it's outside of the buffer, so I don't know how that would affect this commissioner, if it's something that belongs-
It may not, it may not, but I, I think Aaron's got, I don't think all her questions, well, she hasn't looked over your, your answers.
Correct.
Right?
Plus, there's, I guess, the violation with, the, the Hilton Garden violation, that's a, that's interesting, like how, they've got to enter your property, so you've got to give them permission to enter your property and fix what they did and, and redirect it. I mean, yes, that's, I guess you and I can work that out.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how that, if it's, I don't know what the process, you would notify them, they would contact us, they'd contact you first.
Yeah, okay.
And then they would have, I don't know if they would have to come back before the board with a plan to, if they would just say, here's our approved plan, we'll just build what was approved.
They have an approved plan. Why they didn't build it outright, I don't know. I don't know. Interesting, I hope they can.
Yeah, it's very minor, I mean, I, I know they've got a couple of trees there, so they, I mean, they're, you know, like two-inch saplings, so they may need to move those in order, but the, they, they constructed their leak-offs in the right spot, they just kind of let it go.
Right, right.
All right, let's, let's, table you to next week, please, or next month, I mean.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Okay, going on, A18 9.3, Fergie Management, 155 East Street. We approved this administratively last month. Five-country weight grading for an in-ground pool, again, that was taken care of last month. New business, receipt of new applications, phosphorus plant, reduction project.
Yes.
Is that applications here to handle?
Yes, and they're not, they'll present next time. This is facilities to be built so that the town can comply with the order to remove phosphorus from the sewage discharge.
Right. Okay, so we got to pick up maps, the commissioners, commissioners got to pick up maps. Going on to AI, election of officers, we're one short from voting, is that correct?
Yeah.
Daryl?
Daryl Porto's not here.
All right, the 2019 meeting schedule, you're, you're looking for the July-August scenario?
Yes, that schedule went out in your first packet, the one that you got Friday night?
Full member.
Yeah.
Hey, Joe. I'm a full member, Joe's an alternate.
What's that?
Daryl's an alternate.
I have myself an alternate.
Yes, I, I understand that, but she says the whole team's got to be here.
Even the alternate. Is that right? Or they're just permanent?
I didn't bring a copy of the bylaws. I, I thought it was, the, the bylaws would tell us, it's not in my regulations that I brought, I, I didn't bring the bylaws.
Well, why don't you, why don't you scope that out?
I'll do that.
How do we get to 19? All right, so, so you're looking, July, uh, July, August. I don't have, I can't get me. What choices do we have, Aaron? Have you, oh, here we go. Okay, 19th. I mean, you got the, the 4th, you're, you're probably looking at somewhere around the 17th?
Okay, yes, and, or you can move it around, if somebody's got plans, you can move it around.
What's that?
If somebody has a, a plan, a wedding or a trip or something, we can-
Well, I mean, July 3rd would be our normal meeting, August 7th would be our normal meeting.
We have five Wednesdays in July. So we usually do the 3rd Wednesday in July, but the 4th Wednesday is not the last Wednesday.
So the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay, July 17th.
Okay.
Okay. Don't care of that.
And if you, all right, I'll send you, that was a draft, I sent you, I'll send you the final to sign.
All right, going on to Kay. Is there anything here that, that needs any dealing with?
Um, uh-
Just the membership renewal of Kekukuek?
Yes, do you want to approve that renewal? It's $60, you share it with conservation, so it's 120, and you typically, it's, you split it into sixty bucks.
Any objection to joining Kekukuek Wetlands Village? None being approved? Okay, violation.
Could I ask, is anyone going to the conference?
I am.
Oh, you are, you sending your money yourself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then you get reimbursed, you, you hand me, you ask me for the reimbursement.
Okay.
Okay, violation, the first one, cease and correct order, Condracki Lane. Did you indicate that they did it?
Yes, um, we were gonna pursue an injunction, they got a cease and correct order, then they weren't doing it. And then their project engineer, they didn't call them back. So we were gonna go ahead with an injunction and he, I, when I called the owner, he said it was done last Friday, meaning four days ago, and I haven't had the time to go out and check it. But, see, it goes against the order. The order said, not only with the time delay, the order said, you bring in a proposed plan, Rob Baltromid, his town engineer, can look at the proposed plan, I can look at it from a wetland perspective, Rob Baltromid would look at it from an engineering perspective, and then you could go ahead and build it. And then the second problem is, well, erosion controls, at this point, I don't know if there's, they put in any. And then the other problem is the deposition, all that material washed out and ended up on the neighbor's property. So it's not over yet. But I will go out with Rob and, you know, look at it and see what was constructed.
Okay, the notice of violation, East Center Street, we've taken care of that at the moment. That's on the upcoming agenda. And any reason not to adjourn this meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.